Counsel, it is six o'clock. I'll call the city council meeting for Monday, October tenth to order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance. All right, first order of business is the agenda review and adoption. I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Open forum, public comment. We have no one signed up tonight. Special presentations, we have Lions Club all-inclusive playground. Invite you forward.
I'll try to stand through the whole thing, but... I'm Jim Mullenback, longtime resident of Sartell. Also longtime member of the LaSoc Lions Club. And for about three years now, we've been working on a project to bring an inclusive playground into Sartell. The closest inclusive playground at this point is sixty miles away in Wilmer. So it's a, it's a well-needed project. I'm with the LaSoc Lions. There's two other Lions Clubs that are involved in this effort. That's the Sartell Lions and also the Saint Stephen Lions. We're all in the, uh, the Sartell School District. Among the, the three clubs, we have over a hundred members that have been actively working on this project. And, uh, it's, it's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars is what we're looking to raise. Fundraising is going very well, but we still need to ask the city for some help. The three hundred and forty thousand dollars is a six thousand square foot inclusive playground. It'll be over in Lions Park, right over here. We did look at a few locations in the city for it and decided that the Lions Park was probably the best. The one thing is we went out to Central Park and looked at it. Uh, there were areas there. Our concerns there was when there are activities at the park, there's no parking. And the other, the other part of it is, the individuals that'll be using our playground are really, there's a concern for external stimulation. And there's a lot of things happening out at Central Park. So this is a, a lot more quiet location for us. And we've already, it's already, we've done work over there for the, uh, for the trails and stuff. One of the important benefits of doing a project with the Lions is that we're able to apply for a hundred thousand dollar matching grant from Lions Club's International Foundation. And we're in line to get that. The only thing about the pro, about having the grant is they require the proj, a project to be fully funded before they award the money. We've got, as of December, we'll have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars cash in the bank. And, uh, we'll be asking the city for approximately sixty-five thousand dollars plus twenty-seven thousand dollars in in-kind services. That comes out to about twenty-one percent of the cost of the project. Now, one thing international, I said they require a, uh, fully funded. So we'd be asking the city to go along with our hundred and sixty thousand in cash to give us a letter of commitment for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The total cost to the city will still be sixty-five because we'll continue fundraising and be able to pay off, pay off that balance. I've got, uh, I've got a couple people with me tonight that will also talk a little bit. Carrie Hansen is the mother of Daniel, and she actually helped us do a lot of the design on here. She's not able to be here tonight, but she does have a little video for us. Second person is Zach Dingman. Zach is a principal at Riverview. And, uh, he'll, he'll like to talk about how this affects the, impacts children in the city. And then Stacy Strand, is Stacy here? There. Stacy, uh, doesn't have a speaking part, but he's here for questions if, if any of you have that. So let's, let's start, I think, with Carrie's video.
So let's, let's start, I think, with Carrie's video.
Daniel loves going to the playground. Daniel has been going to the playground with his caregivers, parents, grandparents, and anyone who would take him. As Daniel continues to get older, and for anyone with limited mobility, whether it be grandpas, parents, or siblings, of students, or kids with limited mobility, they get frustrated. They want to be independent and they want to do things by themselves. But sometimes it's just not in the cards. When your wheelchair gets stuck in the cedar chips. That is why the inclusive playground would be so amazing for our kids, adults, grandparents with limited mobility. Please consider approving the inclusive playground for kids like Daniel, parents, grandparents that have limited mobility, or anybody who wants to hang out, somebody who has limited mobility. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you Carrie. Zach?
Good evening, Mayor Fitz, Fitz and fellow council members. I'm Zach Dingman, and I'm the principal at Riverview Intermediate, and I'm also a Lions Club, uh, member here in Sartell. I think when, uh, they talked about this presentation, I know we gotta keep it short and sweet because we don't want a long evening, however. Nobody needs to hear me twice, so if you...
Thanks, Rob.
I think I'm supposed to talk some numbers with you. And I'm supposed to talk about, uh, six point seven million is the number of school-aged children with a disability. And I'm supposed to talk about one in three hundred and twenty-three children are born with cerebral palsy. And I could talk numbers all day, but I'm in the business of kids, and that's the business of people. So my fellow LaSoc and fellow, um, Saint Stephen and Sartell Lions Club members have heard me talk about this. But I'm gonna tell you a true story that happened to me last spring. Last spring, I had three fourth grade students that came up to me and they're like, "Dr. Dingman, we gotta talk to you about the playground." I'm like, "Okay." So my administrative hat came on, and I'm thinking, "Somebody's using inappropriate language, somebody's not sharing, somebody's pushing," you know, something like that. I'm like, "All right, come on in." So we came into my office, we sat down, and they're like, "We got a problem." I'm like, "Oh, what's that?" And they looked at me and they said, "Our friend that's in a wheelchair can't play with us." In the back of my head, I'm like, "I know." I've been in three school districts across two states in the last sixteen years. Never had a playground, to be honest with you, that's all-inclusive, especially with kids with a disability. It's expensive. And in the back of my head, I can't talk to these ten-year-olds and say, "Hey, it's a four hundred and fifty thousand or four hundred thousand dollar project, and the surface is two hundred thousand dollars alone." Like, th- they're not gonna understand that. What they want is to play with their friend on a playground. And the thing that I loved about these three girls is not only did they see a problem, but they came up with solutions. And they're like, "We got some ideas, though. You know how we do the walk-a-thon every year?" I'm like, "Yeah, like, maybe we can do it twice and, and raise some money for the playground. Or maybe we could have a garage sale and, and sell some of our clothes and we could donate. Or maybe we could sell lemonade." True story, they're, they're coming up with all of these ideas. And I kept thinking to myself, if I'm sitting across from three ten-year-olds that see a need, um, and are coming up with solutions to try and fix it, I think the adults in the community can as well. Um, and that's why I'm super excited. It's, it's been an absolute joy to work with Saint Stephen Lions and LaSoc Lions over the last eight months. We've gotten to know each other, and the three Lions Clubs have gotten really close. Just last Friday, we were at G Allen's, um, and did a fundraiser there. We've had the kickoff, um, at the Blue Line. We had, uh, Blackberry Ridge, we had a golf outing there, um, all to raise money for this one project. And, you know, if you know the Lions Club, you know, our motto, our mission is, "We serve." And with the lens of a, an elementary principle, yep, it can serve adults as well, but what tugs at my heart is that it serves the kids. And my reason and my why behind this is not only listening to those three girls when they came in, those fourth graders, and talked to me about it, and them wanting to play, you know, with their friend who's in a wheelchair. It's not putting kids with a disability on a playground. It's putting kids without a disability on the same playground as them. So I wanna thank you, uh, for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
And real quick, I did get a message, I don't know with the audio, our livestream is not sharing audio right now.
I, I should've mentioned one other thing when Zach was up here, reminded me of it. We did talk to the school district also about possibly placing this, this park in their, in a s- school district. And, uh, the superintendent came up with two issues. He said, "I think there's two problems with that. Number one, if the school is not open at the time, there's no access to bathrooms. And the other issue is if the school is open at that time, there's only limited amount of pe, a number of people that can come onto the property." So it, it kinda settles back to the perfect location for it is over here at Lions Park. Uh, when we put this together, uh, we looked at the different groups that could be, could join with us. And as the, the numbers are coming out, the percentages are coming out right now, as we've, we're well into the project, we've got LCIF and Lions would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's thirty-one percent of the project. We've got two founding sponsors in Sartell at fifty thousand dollars each. One of them, uh, one of them is John Blatner, and the other one is, is, uh, Sartell Pediatrics. That's twenty-two percent. The city of Sartell then would be twenty-one percent. And, uh, events and fund, foundations that we've had is eighty thousand. That's almost thirteen percent. And then businesses and individuals have donated twelve percent. So it's, it's a well-funded project by all people, uh, in the community. And there just seems to be a lot of support for that. What we'd be able to do is in Feb, January coming up now, is be able to give the city a check for, um, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And the initial purchase would be for the equipment, which would be paid for when it's ordered, but it's, that's, that's a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So the city really wouldn't have to put out any, uh, anything until this project is, is basically over. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, questions?
I do have one question. You had mentioned about the grant, um, that you were hoping to get for a hundred thousand dollars. And you mentioned that, I believe your words were that, "We're in line to get it." My question is, if we were to make the donation, um, what happens if we don't get the grant? Or can you give more details on that, what are the possibilities of getting that grant?
There's a very high percentage we're gonna have the grant. We've been in touch with them, and really it comes down to, if we're able to come up with the funding, we get the grant. And we can get the grant probably as early as January.
Construction timeline? What do we...
Construction time would really be up to the city when they, when they wanna do it. It could be done as early as this summer, or this coming center of, of twenty-three, or it could be twenty-four. We have, uh, two years after the award of the grant to finish the project.
John, what does it look like for infrastructure there? Today you park along the street. We've got a couple parking stalls and a cul-de-sac down there, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, so we would, our responsibility would be to remove the, the existing playground and, and do the, the preliminary dirt work, and then landscape structures would come in and put the structure in.
Correct. I, so, uh, to make this the most, if, if we're to move forward on this, um, I feel like, is our parking adequate? Is it close enough? Is it large enough?
I mean, parking is always an issue on any of our projects, but, uh, I mean, there's a decent-sized parking lot there, and there's quite a bit of off-street parking, you know, you, you know, there's, you know, we can always use more parking, you know?
Yeah. I guess that's what I'm, I'm wondering if we've factored, how much of that we factored in? If mobility is, is one of the challenges, to have them park on the street and then walk down to the nearest crosswalk is not supportive of the overall vision of the project, and so...
Yeah, I can add to that, Mayor. So the group that we've met with a couple times now, two features that I think, once getting the playground built, that would still be on their radar, are, uh, additional parking. We do have the, um, you know, set aside off-street parking that's already there, and there are some handicap stalls, and it's handicap ADA accessible, but additional would be ideal. And then there is currently only an outhouse there and not a full-scale bathroom. That was one of the factors that we really took into play of, is this the right park? But still felt like, after talking with parents, um, of special needs kids, that this gave them the privacy and, and, uh, lower stimulation levels, as, as he mentioned, to make for a better situation. And so future fundraising of some sort of a, a public restroom space that would be handicap accessible, knowing right now that it's, um, an outhouse. So both of those factors were talked about, but as kind of a future phase. I did also wanna mention, um, that they did apply for the city's, uh, grant process program that we had, the, the community funding program that we had established within this last year. So that has been done. We've met with them several times and have a good understanding of their financial plan, um, of the timing of things and, and what they're requesting, as well as our team's ability for in-kind donations, uh, of our public works time. So I, we feel comfortable, and, and I can let Rob speak to the financial aspect of it, but feel comfortable with their request in order to allow us to write a letter of support so that they can gain the hundred thousand dollar funding, up to a maximum of that sixty-five thousand, as he mentioned. But I also wanted to mention to counsel that, you know, they're continuing to fundraise. And then also, um, we, I, I've had some really great conversations with the superintendent, Rital Hoover, and, and I know, uh, Dr. Dingman here was here to share about the school's desire for this. Uh, a good portion of that remaining amount and, and gap that the Lions have is around signage. Uh, and so while the school typically does not contribute to projects that don't exist on their property, similar to how we have that same policy with ours, uh, helping with signage was something that they felt like their shop team could assist with to really, uh, significantly lower the cost. Right now, the only quote they have for signage is the Shields Athletic. So it's probably significantly higher than what those amounts would be. And so we're gonna meet with, uh, Dr. Rital Hoover and, and try to figure out a way that we can get students involved to help with some of that signage there, to even keep those costs lower. So we think, um, that's probably a high end, but, um, we wanna be able to help this, help them by writing this letter of support for them to achieve the grant, to keep moving the project forward.
Counsel, any other questions? Jeff?
Um, I think it's a great project. You know, I'm actually a, a Lion myself, um, and I'm the president of the Soccapas Lions. I know we tried to support you as well. So thank you for putting this project together. It's a great project. Um, I think as a city, we should definitely support you in the ways we can. So we, I guess the question would be for Rob is, do we have the funding available? Is it the Parks and Recs Fund or wherever that we could pull it out?
Yeah, I could see this coming out of the regional house sales tax fund. And to date, um, we're pretty well over what we have budgeted to date already this year. So I do see some excess funds within that fund to be able to allocate towards, um, the project here.
And to be clear, it'd be sixty-five thousand is what our commitment would be beyond just the letter.
And the in-kind donations.
Correct, and the in-kind.
And the, yeah. It surely doesn't affect our budget.
And I should add that there were seventeen area Lions Clubs that joined into this project and, uh, and really came up with about thirty-nine thousand dollars. So the, the Lions with their, with that and their grant would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, which would be thirty-one percent of the project.
I think Sartell's made a great name for, um, being a city with great parks, and this is a, fits, fits a regional need. It's a fantastic addition, so thanks to everybody involved. I guess my question is for staff, if we secure funding, do we have capacity to build it into a work schedule next year?
Yeah, I think we can fit that.
Great, thanks.
Um, I thank you very much for coming in and presenting the information, and, and I really appreciate the work you guys have all done in support of this. Um, I, I think it's a great addition to our city, um, as far as just offering, um, more amenities to all of our residents. And, um, I know that there's been other groups out there that have worked in this park. Um, I think the Boy Scouts or somebody who's out there cutting down trees and doing all sorts of projects out there. There's a lot of, you know, community support for this park, so I, I don't foresee any issues on, on our part moving forward with the, the funding and, uh, and the, uh, effort by the city's in-kind donation. I think that that's something that we can definitely figure out a way to make it work, so...
I'm here in support for it, so, um, I, I do think it's a great example of the public-private partnership that, um, I know this counsel has, has, uh, really pushed hard on with the grant application. And we don't wanna be the, the first funder into a project, right? We want to have an entity go out, uh, generate support for it, and then see how we can bring it to light, uh, at the end of it, so... Counsel here in support on it. I would need a motion, um, probably three-part. One is the letter, uh, two is in-kind donation. I believe that's twenty-seven. Is that the ask? Twenty-seven thousand, and then a, uh, funding of sixty-five thousand.
You wanna do them all separate?
Uh, we take it all as one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, as stated.
Include all three of those elements. Oh, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Did we capture all three? Okay. Counsel, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, next on our agenda is the approval of city council minutes for, we had three of them, September nineteenth, uh, regular, special, and a special. I'd take a full slate to approve them.
I'll make that motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Uh, consent agenda item. Real quick, do we, have we confirmed audio is working again?
Yeah, I unmuted on Facebook and also unmuted on our streaming server. I just unmuted on Facebook. There's a little bit of a delay, so I'm hoping we can hear from somebody in the next couple of minutes to let us know if audio works. We do have it recorded internally, um, and audio will catch on our internal recording, so we can always post it tomorrow morning if we need to with the audio.
Thank you very much. Uh, counsel, we have consent agenda items A through G.
Uh, Mayor, I would just like to pull, pull item D.
Item D? Are there any others? Seeing none, would look for a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G, with the exception of D. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second for items A through G, with the exception of D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. Item D?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I just wanted to pull this item, uh, at this time so that we can, uh, as a staff level here, perform a little bit extra research on this in regards to, uh, the new unit under LELS. We do currently have a bargaining agreement with LELS, so that isn't changing. It's just the creation of a new unit underneath there. And we have an upcoming meeting on the twenty-fourth. And so we wanna be able to have that meeting first and then be able to bring it back at a future meeting, uh, just to ensure that we have the right language in that stipulation agreement. So just a delay on this one, uh, but wanted to be able to make that, make certain that we have it a hundred percent right, so...
Understood. Thank you. Uh, would look for a motion to table item D then, until further meet, uh, further meeting.
I'll make a motion to table item D.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to table item D. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Item D is tabled. On to public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. First one is preliminary and final plat for Solid Rock Edition.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, to give a little background before opening up the public hearing, for consideration tonight is a preliminary and final plat for the Solid Rock Edition on being fraught, brought forth by the AIM Development and their, um, engineer. Uh, the plating of the property is a requirement, um, of the purchase agreement the city has with AIM Development. The plat that is in front of you this evening, uh, asking for recommendation for approval, um, with, uh, subject to the addition of three parcels. So there are some parcels to the far north and to the south, far south, three of them, that would need to be added to the plat. Uh, after review with legal, they recommended bringing it to Planning Commission and to council with approval with adding those, that condition that those are added, um, to the plat. With that, I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have, uh, before opening the public hearing.
Sorry, I might've missed it. Um, reason those three can't be added now?
They will be added before, I mean, you'd be giving approval of the plat with the addition of those three parcels. So before it's recorded, those parcels would be added.
And just to add to that, um, Mayor, that the firm that was actually doing the plating for AIM were not provided with those PIDs initially.
Okay.
So that's the reason why they're not on right now, but they will be on, um, before they're final, recorded.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the preliminary and final plat for Solid Rock Edition, please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Shoppick. I'm with Laux, and our address is seventy-two hundred Hemlock Lane, Maple Grove, Minnesota. And I'm the civil engineer working on this. Just here to ask, uh, answer your questions and to confirm that we are working on those three other properties, and we are gonna survey them and get them, uh, to the city for their review. Otherwise, I'm just here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, else wishing to testify? Please step forward. Yeah, please step to the podium, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
My name is Jack Ryan. I'm in, uh, one oh one South Twelfth Street, in the apartments. I normally avoid the north side of town, but last week, I happened to hit this, uh, traffic jam at the light here. And it ran from the light up further north, all the way to the river. And I was in it for about thirty-five minutes. And so I have, I asked one of the, the police officers in the bank, I asked them, "Hey, can't you guys put an officer on there to direct traffic for forty-five minutes, twice a day?" He said, "It's not our job, man, unless the lights break down." So here, here's my, but I see that the timing on the one light going north, the first light, has been increased from thirty seconds to forty seconds today, and it makes a difference. So my plea is, there's still adjustments you could make.
Yeah.
The, the southbound traffic at the light near the golf course has a ten-second left turn, okay? The one going from east to west... The one going from east to west has a thirty-second left turn. There's never any more than twelve or thirteen cars lined up there. They could add, take away that twenty seconds for them and add it to the north-south traffic and you'd almost be rid of that traffic jam. That's my suggestion. I went to the cops and I said, "Just a two on the street," and I said, "Hey, how come you guys..."
I apologize to interrupt, sir. The specific item that we're reviewing tonight for this, uh, public hearing is on a development. Uh, I hear your concern loud and clear on the traffic. Uh, I think the five of us up here sit in it daily. Um, I can also assure you that every morning, uh, the city administrator actually gets a text from me as to what changes we think we could make by the day. Um, and so, um, apologize that this isn't the, the appropriate spot for our
Okay.
discussion on it, but that we absolutely hear you loud and clear and they're doing everything possible.
Well, the, the story I've gotten is there's nothing we can do about it. I went to the police department, they said there's nothing we can do about it. The light timer can do something about it and should, thank you.
Agreed, thank you. Council, um, we'll get back to our preliminary and final plat, o- public hearing. Are there any other, uh, comments for the public hearing on Solid Rock Edition? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, any discussion on preliminary and final plat for Solid Rock Edition?
Can I just ask, just a quick question, um, why weren't the, uh, these missing parcels part of the original plat? Is there, what happened there?
Yeah, I'll try to address this, so, um, and, and, uh, Jeff, feel free if, if you want to add anything to this too, but my understanding is that AIM mistakenly did not provide the, the parcels in red. Um, Scott and April actually caught that as they were preparing documents and, and got back in touch with Loax. They've been expediting it, um, and working as quickly as possible to ensure that it gets added, but the, initially it was not provided to Loax. So they, that was just been made aware to them in the last two weeks. They're getting it added, um, and so I don't foresee an issue with this slowing up anything, um, but it was a, a catch towards the end, um, but Jeff, feel free to add anything else to that, or is that a good recap of, okay?
Catch.
What's our risk in approving this without having the whole picture right now?
The lots that are currently missing will be outlots, and so all of the easements and right-of-way and access we need or desire for this plat are included in that main plat we already have, so low risk because they will simply be outlots.
Council, any other questions? Seeing none, would look for a, uh, motion to approve the plats for Solid Rock Edition.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, any other deliberation? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Uh, second public hearing for the night is on drainage and utility easement vacation for Regional Medical Arts Campus Three.
And Mayor members of the council, Dovetail Development is requesting the vacation of the drainage, excuse me, utility easement, uh, between properties eighteen oh one and eighteen oh five on Amber Avenue. They're requesting this vacation because, uh, they want to combine those lots, uh, for future development of the parcel. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer before the public hearing.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the drainage utility easement vacation for Regional Medical Arts Campus Three, please step forward, state your name and address. Second offer. Third and final offer, anyone wishing to testify on the drainage utility easement vacation for Regional Medical Arts Campus Three? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any discussion on the, uh, vacation of this easement? Seeing none, would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, uh, to approve the vacation easement. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Onto old business, ditch management plan, final report.
Mayor, members of the council, for your review consideration input, an approval tonight is a ditch management plan. Uh, the city's two thousand and eighteen surface water comp plan recommended that the city complete this management plan. There are a number of critical dish, ditches within the city, um, that convey stormwater and need proper maintenance, for proper conveyance and also to limit, um, flooding potential. So the, kind of the goals, uh, of this management plan were to do in site, a s- site inspection of the current condition of each ditch, rank the maintenance needs of those, uh, define an inspection frequency, uh, also outline a ditch typical section and ditch profile, and then also provide cost estimates for the major maintenance and vegetation maintenance for those ditches so that, uh, staff can plan ahead and make sure that we're keeping these conveyances in good condition. Um, so the site inspection and current conditio- condition of ditches, um, here is all of the critical ditches listed. Um, they're ranked one through three, one with a low priority, um, where we continue to monitor. Uh, two is a, a medium priority to start beginning maintenance activities, and then a high priority where we would recommend immediate maintenance activities needed. Here's kind of a map of the higher priority ditches. I would be a ditch, um, just connecting Celebration Neighborhood to ditch thirteen. We do note in the report that the cleaning of that ditch though might have some downstream impact, so we would want to look at that if and when we move forward with ditch maintenance on those. Uh, ditch BB is in the Huntington neighborhood. Um, Public Works has cleaned out a part of that ditch already, uh, which showed significant improvements in drainage in that area. And then, um, ditch sixteen is another priority, and then, um, ditch thirteen, um, kind of picking up where Public Works has cleaned out this fall already, all the way to the Watab River is the main priorities. Um, the ranking of maintenance needs and inspection frequency, um, the report lays out that table. Um, again, anywhere from inspecting every two years to every year to every five years, and then each ditch does have a little more specifics on the type of maintenance that would be needed. Um, each ditch section has an aerial with a defined profile and typical section. Um, these are critical to get into the, um, maintenance plan. If development occurs or projects in the area occur, there is a, a set profile, um, that we can then go in and clean out the ditch, excavate the ditch, um, so that, making sure we have that capacity moving forward that is needed. Um, estimated costs, um, again, just major maintenance would be the removal of sediment, the reshaping of the ditch. Um, assumptions on the cost estimates for that is that a foot of sediment would be removed from the ditches and that the sediment would not need to be disposed in a, in a landfill. Um, and then the vegetation maintenance is the trimming of vegetation. That type of maintenance is what Public Works has done along ditch thirteen this past summer and fall. So looking at all the ditches, critical ditches, um, the cost estimates there that we will start incorporating into, um, planning and budgeting moving forward. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the ditch management plan.
Council, what questions do we have about the ditch, ditch management plan? It's tough to say with a straight face.
I, it's hard to say.
Yeah, a quick question. Um, you had costs in there, was that based on our city public works, or is that a consultant number? How, how do you get to that? Is that based on our hourly guess at what public works the cost to do that?
Um, so the major maintenance was more on excavation costs, um, to have a contractor do it. Um, the vegetation maintenance was estimated based on a, a contractor, and these are total project costs which include design costs, soft costs with it. Um, so if you, um, do utilize public work staff moving forward, there would be a cost savings from what is budgeted or in the planet currently.
John, I know it's not a favorite thing for the guys to do, but is that something that we're comfortable saying, yeah, we can do that going forward, or?
Yeah, I mean, we can do some of it, and we put, I would guess we put a hundred, over a hundred hours in that ditch thirteen, you know, and pulling and dragging and, but we got it clean as, I mean, you could run a kayak down it, I think, so. I mean, it takes a lot of work, a lot of energy, but I mean, we can do it, you know, with them, with the time.
No, we did it in the middle of the summer in the, the highest foliage point, I mean, if you do it in spring or, or late fall, maybe.
I mean, one year we went up, up here through the Watab, up behind Lions Park, one winter we went up through there. And it worked okay until you get a lot of snow and then it gets to be more of a pain too, so.
We have the right equipment or tools for that?
Yeah.
Dry season and run the front-end loader through?
Yeah, right.
The major maintenance, I think, might be a little bit harder depending if you're reshaping the ditch and permitting and excavating.
And from a budget perspective too, we do budget a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars annually for ditch maintenance, pond dredging, pond assessments. Um, I know April didn't want to tackle, or expect to tackle all of this next year, but I think we can sort of piecemeal it over the next five or so years. Um, and if we need to add more to our stormwater fund, then we'd need to charge more for stormwater utility fees on our utility bills.
Is this something that we can build out on our GIS, like we were talking earlier of, here's our plan over a five-year period, as you talked about, Rob?
Yeah, I think so, I think in the spring when we look at all of our capital improvement plans, uh, we can build out a plan over the next five years for ditch maintenance. That's gotta be feasible, right, April?
Absolutely.
When I, so, first I'm hearing about it, I guess, in, in a couple of years of being on, is this our first go at it, John, or is this? I mean, when Sealcoat, you're telling us, hey, every five to seven years we can plan on it, uh, what's the vegetation grows, uh, growth and infill of sediment on ditches, how should we be planning for this in the future?
Yeah, I mean, we did a pretty thorough job and we probably haven't been in that ditch in twenty years, so we, we really went in it. Um, you know, five, six years ago, we went in that Huntington ditch and we really cleaned that out, and it's been, it's been good ever since. You know, a lot of it's education, you know, residents, you know, not encroaching on the ditch, not dumping in the ditch, and then just trying to keep the vegetation back and the bigger trees that fall, but, um, you know, where we've done the work, it, it has worked, it just, it takes some time and, you know, getting access is the other tough part as they, as we build and build out and just to making sure we have the access to the ditch.
Yeah, remember you cited the Huntington in one of the recent floods, is that that area didn't really flood or have, have much, uh, groundwater impact based on the ditch?
Yeah, there was nothing there this last summer, and that's just, you know, it, it's gotta be from, you know, that maintenance of that ditch and getting it cleaned and open, so.
Do we have anything in ordinance that requires our ponds to be kept? I mean, as I drive by Heritage, Fourth Ave, um, there's a ditch there that, or a, uh, a pond there, and I guess I'm, I'm mixing pond and ditches here, but it's, it's overall, um, overgrowth, if you will, of trying to move our groundwater or hold our groundwater. Do we have anything that protects this longer term or guides the community?
Um, I mean, the city did do, uh, pond maintenance inspections similar to this plan for ponds already, um, and Public Works has been going into those priority ponds and getting them cleaned out, so we're trying to tackle it from a comprehensive approach, um, if that's what you're.
That's mostly sediment, correct? When you, I mean, the, the bank growth is what I think a lot of our neighbors and whatever, I've heard a lot saying, "I've got weeds, I can't see the water," whatever, can I go in and cut it out? And I just kind of shrug and say, I guess.
If I look at off Roberts, there's, historically, there were some larger ponds there that are now fully overgrown. So by design, it was to take groundwater or, or capture it, right? If that now is overgrown, that groundwater is going somewhere else, the, and so I just wonder how do we, um, how do we keep our ditches intact and protect them longer term from every five years going in and redoing them?
Mayor members of council, um, just one other place we could potentially get some funding. We'll have this in our, our, uh, hazard mitigation plan, so we'll be able to apply for funding, kind of like with the generators on this, so this may be a potential source of funding for it, for cleaning and maintenance.
I thought the recommendation was to burn the ditches.
You know, with our, with our comprehensive plan we did with our ponds, you know, we went in and we measured all the depths, so we, we know the, the amount of sedimentation that's in them and what they can, what they can sustain and maintain before we need to go in and clean them, so, you know, our plan is, you know, the priority ones are, you know, a couple of year, we're gonna go after and get them cleaned out.
Council, any other questions or comments on the ditch management plan? Would look for, we'll look for a approval of the ditch management plan report. There's a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Onto drainage study, final report.
Good evening, um, my name is Rachel Pickelman and I work with April at SCH, I'm a senior water resources engineer. And I manage the project that I'll be speaking about right now, and basically just kind of give you a recap of what's presented in the final report. Um, before I talk about what we did, I'm gonna remind you all why we did it, um, in May. I think you guys are all well aware that there was a significant rain event. Um, this particular one kind of stretched over three days and it resulted in some substantial flooding, um, including flooding of homes and streets and a lot of yards. Um, the flooding happened about a day and a half later, a day to a day and a half later. And then the same thing happened less than six weeks later. So in June, late in June, um, different rainfall event. This one was a lot more intense, it was seven inches and seven hours. And when you think about current statistics, that's on the order of a five-hundred to thousand-year rainfall event, which I hate saying that, 'cause I know that it could happen more frequently than that.
Next summer.
But, yep, it's possible. And then there again, we saw the flooding, um, a day, day or two later after the rainfall. And I'm just gonna share some photos, um, that were provided by some of you there in the room, um, and homeowners as well. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we collected some of this information, but just want to give you, um, kind of familiarize each of you with the extent of the flooding. This is the intersection of Thirteenth and Grizzly, just kind of a closer look. And then this is looking south, um, along Thirteenth. And this is a view of the backyard, you can see some of the sandbagging that was attempted there, um, to try to keep water out of the basements. Um, it was not effective in preventing the flooding, um, but there's attempts made. Um, just a high-level recap of what we all did with this study. First, we collected data, we conducted a site visit, we collected survey data, uh, we reviewed previous studies related to this watershed, and we also had a lot of community involvement, which I'll talk about, uh, more in a moment. Um, we then generated a stormwater model, and I promise I won't geek out about that during this presentation 'cause you guys don't care about it as much as I do. Um, but it's a very technical model of the watershed that simulates both the rainfall events that resulted in flooding this year as weather, as well as other rainfall events, um, that can be analyzed too. Um, and that model was calibrated to produce results that match what was observed in May and June of this year. Then we moved on and, um, analyzed several different flood mitigation alternatives. Um, we, when we were developing a list of possible alternatives, there's kind of a summary of what we were thinking about here. Obviously, they needed to be effective in minimizing flooding. Um, we wanted to know what could be done in the short term. Um, we wanted to know what could be done in the short term or what could be planned for, for long-term implementation. Wanted to know if they're effective and then also needed to generate costs so that the financial planning can take place. And then generated a report. So a little bit about the community involvement, we held a neighborhood meeting in July. It was very well attended and, um, we kinda realized that we needed to do more than just have a neighborhood meeting because there was so well attended and there was so much information available from the residents. We needed a, um, organized way to collect information about the flooding that occurred in the past. So we sent out letters to generate a contact list and then using that contact list, uh, we notified residents of, um, a Wiki map, and I'll share that in a moment here, um, that we set up to collect information. And then before I move on, just, you know, there were also a couple blog posts on the city's website as well. Oh, and in addition to these, um, planned ways to engage the community, we also had information provided by phone and email. That was great to have as well. So I mentioned the Wiki map. Um, this is a tool that we use for community engagement on all sorts of projects. Um, but what you're seeing here is kind of what the homepage looked like. So it's a map of the watershed. And then you can see like the teardrop type, um, icons or raindrop icons. Each of those represents, um, a data point that was entered by a community member. And it might look like this, so there would be a comment, um, and I can't read that, but it could be something like the flooding overtopped the road at this point, or it overtopped the pond at this point. And then residents were able to also attach photos. Um, they could also sketch on here to show us how far the water got up on their property during those rainfall events this year. And all of this information is really, really valuable to us when we're creating the watershed model to make sure that it's generating results that match what was observed. And so this was kind of the main, um, component of the com- community involvement and really information gathering. Okay, so a little bit about the flood modeling. Just the teal line on here, um, represents the overall watershed and it's almost six thousand acres in size. Um, and when I talk about the flooding occurring a day or two after the rainfall, it has everything to do with the size of this watershed. Okay? Um, you see Baker's Lake on there, um, kinda in the center of the image, and what we're really focusing on is the portion of the watershed that's south or downstream of Baker's Lake. Which includes ditch thirteen that April was just talking about. Uh, these are some of the model results that are produced. So on the left, it's showing the peak, um, inundation from the May event. On the right, it's the peak inundation from the June event. Uh, the deeper blue is greater depth of water, lighter blue is shallower water. Um, and we're able to take these model results and compare them to the information on the Wiki map and make adjustments to the model until they agreed. So talking about the mitigation alternatives, we actually had a list of, I think, fourteen alternatives. Um, but many of them were eliminated because, um, of like physical constraints or just didn't seem practical um, to implement. And we narrowed it down to this list of six, which were analyzed, um, in the model. So the first one, um, actually alternative zero represents kind of a new baseline condition. So that incorporates, um, the ditch clearing that took place this year. And it also includes phase one, um, of a, a wetland mitigation bank that occurred northwest of Baker's Lake. That's, that's constructed already. Those two things, um, are in place today or have happened, but they weren't in place when the flood events occurred. So we had to create a new model that had those before we would analyze the other alternatives. Okay, then as far as the flood mitigation alternatives go, the first one is a new outlet for Baker's Lake that, um, directs water away from the flood-prone area and over to the east and into the Mississippi River. Try to point it out. It's not working. The screen's, yes, that's a bummer. Okay. Um, it's the line on the top right. So again, a new outlet to Baker's Lake. That's the first alternative. The second alternative, um, is a control structure for Baker's Lake. And that's something that was discussed at the neighborhood meeting. Why can't you just hold back the water at Baker's Lake? Um, and see how beneficial that would be downstream. So that's what the second alternative was. The third alternative was adding storage for stormwater runi- uh, runoff, so flood storage just off of ditch thirteen and south of Baker's Lake. And that's something that could be implemented with um, the upcoming Fifteenth Street Extension Project. The fourth alternative was diverting water, um, over to the golf course, recognizing that it's o- probably okay to, um, have water on a golf course rather than in homes and streets, um, during a flood event. So we, um, analyzed that option. The fifth one was to replace twin, um, forty-eight inch pipes, which, um, are a bit of a bottleneck today. And those are just north of Grizzly. And then the sixth, um, option is to divert flow from the ditch, um, north of Grizzly to the wetland complex, south of Grizzly, um, trying to take advantage again of some natural storage that's there today. Okay, I know there's a lot of numbers in this table, but, um, I'll try and talk through it, um, quickly here. Um, I'm gonna show a figure that shows eight locations on a map. Those are locations scattered around the flood-prone areas. Um, and that's what's referenced in the far left column here. The next column for the existing condition and alternative zero, that's really the depth of water during the June event. Um, without any alternative incorporated. Alternative one has that new outlet to Baker's Lake. And you can see here that there is a meaningful reduction in peak elevations, um, with alternative one. So you've got, you know, from a half a foot to more than a foot of reduction in flooding with alternative one. Alternative two, um, that's the alternative where there's a control structure on Baker's Lake to hold back the water. And you can see there's a, a very significant reduction in flood elevations here. Um, it actually shows the greatest benefit. However, I'll talk a little bit later about why we would not recommend pursuing, um, that particular option. Alternative three, um, looks at the additional storage with the Fifteenth Street Project. There, there's not a huge reduction in peak elevations, but it's a very feasible project and wouldn't hurt anything if it were constructed. Um, alternative four took more water to the golf course. A little bit of benefit with those, but, um, not significant. Um, alternative five was replacing the twin forty-eights north of Grizzly. And there again, you see a, a very significant decrease in peak flood elevations, especially, um, north of Grizzly. And alternative six was routing the water to the wetland complex, um, really minor benefit there. Okay, the three that have the red boxes around them, so alternative one, alternative three, and alternative five, we are recommending, um, pursuing in addition to one other that I'll mention shortly. So what would the flooding look like if you got a June event again with alternative one implemented? That's what you see on the right here. Um, so you do see, um, pretty significant reduction in the flooding. I know it's difficult to see at this scale, but the water would not be inundating those homes that were flooded north of Grizzly, um, anymore for this particular rain event with this alternative.
We potentially still have some at Grizzly and Thirteenth, it looks.
Yep, yep. It would be very shallow, um, flooding. Yep. With alternative three, again, that's what's shown on right and the existing conditions is shown on left. Um, this is where there's just more storage added with the Fifteenth Street Project. There's really not like a significant reduction, barely measurable, but again, it's not hurting anything to add storage to B M Ps that are already needed for that roadway project. And then alternative five, um, you can see a really significant reduction in the flooding with that one on the right here, the existing conditions on the left. Again, this is rerunning that June event, um, to see how the flooding might have been different if that alternative was in place. Alternative five is getting, um, the twin forty-eight inch pipes out. Um, basically extending the ditch over to Thirteenth and then having a larger capacity culvert, like a box culvert, crossing Thirteenth and conveying the flows downstream. That alternative also, um, requires replacement of the culverts at Fifth Street, um, to make sure that there aren't downstream impacts or that the downstream impacts are minimized, um, as much as possible. And then, um, I said I would explain why we would not recommend alternative two. Alternative two had the most significant reduction in, um, elevations, flood elevations downstream. But this is the consequence. So what I'm showing here is significant flooding up and around Baker's Lake. There's a huge increase in the flooding in that area. Um, in addition to that, um, you'd also be effectively constructing a dam immediately upstream of a developed residential neighborhood. And I would not recommend that, um, even if it were permitted. I believe it would be considered a high-hazard dam because of the potential for loss of life in the event of failure with development right downstream of it. So we ran the simulation because the questions were asked and we wanted to know how effective it would be, but we would not recommend, um, alternative two. Okay, so there's, so we are recommending three of the alternatives we considered. In addition to that, there's also like a very near-term improvement I didn't even mention that wasn't even simulated with the model because the results are pretty straightforward. Um, that additional recommendation is to lower the curb along Thirteenth, just north of Grizzly. That's where the water is, the elevation of the flooding in the backyards north of Grizzly is controlled by that curb line. The water has to pond up high enough to overtop that curb line, get into Thirteenth and float on Thirteenth. Um, so that's the relief point. So by lowering that curb line right there, you'd have, um, you know, six inches, it's a six-inch curb, right? Six inches of flood, um, depth reduction just from that improvement and it's a pretty low-cost improvement, fourteen thousand dollars. Yep, go ahead, April.
What's the downstream impact of that?
E- essentially, nothing.
So the city's trail gap project that will be constructed next summer puts sidewalk right in this area, so we are gonna proactively put the curb cut, that recommendation into that, uh, Trail Gaps project for next summer.
So it'd be the pedestrian curb cut would become the relief for that? Is that what I'm understanding?
It, it won't be a, a pet ramp location, um, but we would just taper the sidewalk down and have a curb cut. So it, and then come back up to.
Almost like where we have the historic rain gardens in the neighborhoods, something, some, okay.
Okay, so then, um, kind of the next, um, project to plan for would be the replacement of those twin forty-eight inch pipes. That's estimated to be one point four million in total, um, implementation cost. April, what does that all include? It's not only construction, but it's also the engineering and.
Total project costs, soft costs included.
Um, so one point four million. And then the long-term improvement that, um, provided a meaningful benefit is that second outlet to Baker's Lake. Um, I forgot to mention that there's already a lot of that infrastructure in place. I don't know, a third of the outlet is probably in place already.
Yeah, there's a existing sixty-inch pipe from Pine Cone Road to the east to the Mississippi River. So as development would happen between Pine Cone Road and Baker's Lake, the rest of that infrastructure would be constructed at that time is the recommendation.
Um, you know, we are also recommending that storage be added with the Fifteenth Street Project, um. Like I said, stormwater ponds are gonna be needed just for that project as it is, um, for the new impervious associated with the roadway extension. Um, so we're re- recommending that they be oversized within reason, um, to provide more storage within the watershed. And then con- continue to consider enhanced development standards. And we also talked about the ditch maintenance, you know, right before this. That's also gonna help minimize flood risk. Yep.
Um, with the enhanced development standards, so staff is currently working on ordinance updates to address the new MS four permit, um, which would include stormwater regulations. And so we plan to incorporate some of those enhanced development standards for this watershed, um, for council's consideration. And we can talk about those more when those ordinance updates are presented to you over the next couple of months.
Mayor members of the council, one item I will add, uh, regarding the one point four million, so Rachel and April and I have been working with Kristen in their, uh, funding group. As Peter mentioned earlier, there's some FEMA hazard mitigation funding out there that we can apply for. So we intend to leverage funding opportunities right away. In fact, this first, uh, deadline is coming up this fall for hazard mitigation. Um, so our hopes are that we can leverage funding sources for that one point four million to put it as we know it's urgent and we know, uh, the neighbors are looking for as quick of a fix as possible. Um, while we don't have the one point four million budgeted in our current capital improvements plan, we are pursuing, uh, funding opportunities as we speak.
Okay, so next steps, uh, we're gonna have another neighborhood meeting to share the findings and, um, recommendations. And then we will officially finalize the report, um, and then continuing to seek the funding. So any questions about this study?
Council, any questions?
I had a question just in regards to Baker Lake, its township, correct?
Yep.
So how do we co-exist with that moving forward? Have you looked into that? And, and is township aware of the concerns we have or issues and?
Not that I know of, but to me, that fits under like a larger umbrella of a lot of coordination that would need to take place for implementation of that project. And that would need to also include the D N R because the lake is a public water. Um, and we would be effectively, you know, changing the outlet, um, there too. So that's, um, noted in our report. Basically, I don't know that we have anything specific to the township though. Um, so we could certainly add that, so that's kept in mind too. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Um, just a couple of quick questions. Um, just the overall, um, you know, I was very impressed by this, you know, with the, the reports. I had no idea you guys could run simulations like that. Um, are, are you seeing at, at all an increase in overall rainfall? Is it a trend? Is it something to be concerned about? And are we planning for it?
Uh, yes and yes. Um, yes, it's absolutely a trend. Um, and you know, the state climatologist like says it best. Our climate is getting warmer and wetter, um, but you all have experienced that this year with the back-to-back significant rainfall events. Um, and we're, I mean, we see that statewide. These rains are so intense in twenty twenty. I'm a nerd, right? So I, we have a weather station on our roof. And in twenty twenty, we got nine inches of rain in less than twelve hours at our place, a little bit south of here. Um, a couple hours south of here. And that was like off the charts for the statistics, um, unheard of. And unfortunately, yeah, we, we do need to plan for that. And I think that this report is a perfect example of um, increasing community resilience, um, to these more significant rainfall events.
Great. And then, uh, just last question is, as that Baker's Lake area develops, are we planning for that so that you put all those homes in there and that water's just gonna increase that amount ru- of runoff in that area?
April, can I put you on the spot to answer this one? She, uh, she's answered the question a few times. She's better at it.
Uh, we're absolutely planning for that and that'll be part of those increased stormwater requirements for this drainage area as well as we move forward. Yeah, we're planning for it.
Thank you.
See, I just wanna mention too, you know, I mentioned that like when we were analyzing these alternatives, we used that June event. That is not normal. That's a, a specific example of how we are planning for more extreme events. Usually when we, um, test alternatives and run these scenarios, we're looking at the ten-year or the hundred-year event. And like I said, that June event was off the charts. I mean, it was between a five hundred and thousand year. That's off the charts in terms of normal design standards. But we wanted to use that because we know it could happen again. Um, and we also felt like it would produce more meaningful results where the residents. Um and we also felt like it would produce more meaningful results where the residents could look at it and say, okay, if I got that same rainfall event again. Not some hypothetical perfect hundred year storm, but what if I got that same one again? Well, how would the flooding be reduced by an alternative? Um but that's a perfect example of how we are making changes to account for those.
Just to give you some context of that, so it was seven inches over.
Seven hours.
Seven hours. Um a hundred year event in this area would be about six and a half inches over twenty-four hours. Um is what you would typically kind of design to. We're looking at a much more significant event for this flooding area.
So I agree with Councilman Cold that um the modeling was impressive to to help us understand um what happened, what options are to mitigate it and what the future might be. I think about it in two ways. Um I guess the question for you is is can we, as we take the steps um to mitigate this, can we also share that to the to the neighbors that will still be affected, right? I I think of some of these and it's like, hey, um easy to armchair quarterback. Had I known this was coming, it was forecasted, um maybe, maybe not, right? Um but what I don't wanna do is have some of our residents feel like the steps we're taking is going to prevent this from ever happening again. Right? And so I I think sharing this modeling in those community uh groups or neighborhood groups is this potentially still will happen again. Here's what we're doing to limit it, but I just don't wanna give, I guess, false hope if we can prevent it. Second part of that is it didn't just rain in Sartell. So what are other communities doing to overcome some of this?
Uh well, this is a kind of leading edge. Um I mean, so we're doing this exact team s- type of study um in other communities right now. Um we're doing it in Polkay as well, um and Saint Cloud, um and Worthington and Duluth. Those four communities were funded by an MPC A grant that was just established last year. Um those the projects were funded by that grant and as part of that, um we're doing a risk assessment. So we're taking modeling results like this along with other data sets like um parcel data that's categorized to identify high value buildings on properties to see where do we have a high damage potential? Where could the costs of the flooding be the most significant to help prioritize projects? Um we're also taking the modeling results and using them another way by looking at where more vulnerable populations are located. Recognizing that those folks are gonna have a really hard time recovering from a flood. And um that could be a way to prioritize an improvement as well. And then another thing would be to look at where do you have critical infrastructure um that's affected by flooding? So it could be like a fire station that, you know, isn't accessible during a flood. Um something like that and to help prioritize improvements that way. With what we did in this watershed, we were specifically focusing on reducing the overall flooding depth in the areas that experienced the damage twice this year. That was our focus. But these results can definitely be applied a lot of different ways um too.
Council, I just think about the uh the impact we're going through right now with one of our major north south corridors shut down. Um this flooding event was starting to have an impact on Pine Cone. And in the event it shuts down Pine Cone and we are back to a single north south route for possibly multiple days. Um I know we're talking, we've been talking about the northwest part of our community, but I just think downstream here, this right here is a hazard, massive hazard for the overall community.
Yeah, I think you'd have to justify that to the rest of the city. I mean, a lot of people didn't weren't impacted by that except for a few neighborhoods and. Um it's varied. I mean, we've had different floods in different neighborhoods and different times. So I I think it does impact the overall city. Um and and I I think that if you talk about something like Pine Cone and in the main throwaway, we make sure it shut this down on those, both those storms that this got shut down out here, um it definitely affects uh the trickle down effect through the throughout the city.
April nudged me, she wanted me to um say something about County Road One. Um a couple of years ago, prior to the construction that's occurring right now, um we did a feasibility study that focused on flooding and what could be done to mitigate mitigate the flood risk for County Road One. That was more specific to the Mississippi River flooding, not a localized rainfall event. Um but the same thing could be applied to any road in the city where you analyze the watershed that's is the source of flooding. And you look at the probability of it actually overtopping and causing a closure of the roadway. Um and trying to de- define a new standard for maybe it's a higher profile of that roadway so that the risk of flooding is lower um or whatever it might be. Um yet like that type of study could be applied to any roadway. And I mean, I'm working on a project right now, Highway ninety-three in southern Minnesota where we're doing that, we're actually elevating the road eight feet. Um in areas because it's in the Minnesota River flood plain and it's had that much water on it um in twenty ten. So it can be done.
And I mean, the results of what Rachel's looking at for County Road One, for example, um we did raise the road as much as we could. We also rerouted some storms who were um part of that road is in the flood plain. Um so just minimizing potential flood impacts on that specific project. So when we are looking at these projects and the different roadways, we do take that into consideration.
Council, one other item I'd offer is uh on the dice in front of you, uh had a resident reach out, provide some feedback. I think it's um pretty spot on and I know it'll be covered further in the community or neighborhood uh meetings that will come following tonight's meeting. Just wanna make note of that. Any other questions or comments?
Just one question related to the options for um that would accompany Fifteenth Street extension. Can any of this work be included in the funding that we're trying to obtain for for that project?
Yeah, good question. Um actually, this I I think that this drainage study was exceptionally wise by council to do as we're looking to uh create the new road connection there with Fifteenth Street North because I think it will actually open up some funding opportunities for us to include the uh remediation factors that we've talked about tonight as a part of that road reconstruction. So it actually opens up a few options for us. So um it's very timely and we will definitely leverage this report and the work that's gone into it to uh look for specific funding options for the roadway, which would include the draining drainage remediation.
Council, look for a motion to approve the final report.
I'll make a motion for that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Um again, I'd commend Rachel for the awesome report. Uh I think the visuals helped us really understand this, so very much appreciate the modeling. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. New business, final plat for Regional Medical Arts Campus Three.
Mayor members of the council, um this actually is in relation to the oh seven B that you guys approved earlier regarding the Drainage and Utility Easement Vacation. Uh so this would be for the final plat for this. There are two lots combined into one, which is why we are final plating. It was preliminary platted with the, when the original Regional Medical Arts Campus was built out. And so the two individual lots are being combined, hence the Drainage and Utility Vacation. Um and the site plans that we've received to date are for a behavioral health clinic. So this has been recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and we would be looking for approval as well.
Council, any questions? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to approve final plat.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve final plat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next up, request for proposals, Pine Ridge Golf Course.
Yeah, I'm here, members of the council. You have in front of you here um uh and I have on the screen here for everyone uh information regarding Pine Ridge Golf Course. To provide a little context regarding Pine Ridge Golf Course, um this is currently an eighty-one point three eight acre, nine hole, city owned golf course. It was originally purchased as an eighteen hole golf course. Um and then split in two, the current uh regionally renowned park, Central Park, uh Penguin Central Park and then Central Park Boulevard are now the other nine holes. Um so originally, this was an eighteen hole golf course. We split off a park, uh made great use of that park. And now this nine hole golf course has been a tremendous hit in our community for a beginner, um an in-town course, affordable course. Um it has been a a very well received community amenity for us. Uh in twenty twenty-two through September, just over sixteen thousand rounds of golf um sold. We are looking to explore additional amenities that could be provided at this golf course and improvements to the current uh foundational amenities that are already there, which is a clubhouse and some maintenance facilities. Uh but we know that there's opportunities for more there and and we know that city government isn't always uh the appropriate place for private business opportunities like this to uh grow from. Um so we are looking to explore whether or not there would be an interested party to purchase the whole site, which would include the golf course and the clubhouse and facilities. As I mentioned, it's roughly eighty-one point three eight acres. Um there would be a requirement for it to remain a golf course. So there would be a deed restriction on the sale of the property, that it would be required to be remaining a golf course for thirty years, uh which is the longest that we're able to put a deed restriction on public property. Um the intent uh in this staff recommendation is that it would remain uh a top amenity in Sartell as a golf course. But that would be able to have a private owner who'll be able to leverage and and build off of some of those excellent amenities are there, such as maybe an improved clubhouse, um and maybe items like a a mini golf or improvements of the driving range, uh so on and so forth. We we know it's on prime Pine Cone property there uh right at the corner. So what you have in front of you is a a request for proposal that we would like to issue uh for the full eighty-one point three eight acres. Again, it'd be for the nine hole golf course with a deed restriction that it would remain a golf course. Uh it would include the clubhouse, which was built in nineteen eighty-two. It would include the old buildings. And we would be requesting proposals that would include uh site plans and the additional amenities and a full proposal of what they would be bringing there, uh really with the hopes of council being able to choose through some concept plans. Um not necessarily um looking to keep everything as is, but that it would really provide additional amenities to our community, our youth. Um and again, that affordable golf option. So in front of you is that request for proposal that we would like to open up and publish and post. We would take proposals and bring it back to council uh for review of those full business plans, uh site drawings and concepts, uh of which you would be able to make a choice at that point. Uh the beauty of a request for proposal is that you don't necessarily need to go with the low bid, but with the bid that makes the most sense for the concept and site amenities that you're going after um for this piece of property. I'll stop there and answer any questions you you might have as I I know this is a a big uh property and big deal for the council and our community as a whole.
Thank you. Council, questions, thoughts, considerations?
I think it's the right idea to uh put it out for RFP, just uh for people that uh understand it's, you know, rather than just selling it to one entity, it's 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 the ethical thing to do to uh put it out for RFP, so I think we're doing the right thing.
Just clarification on the the number of rounds of golf outlined, is that for what time period? Is that just twenty twenty-two?
It's for the full season of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Yep. And I I should add to that, um I didn't mention that there is a current tenant and lease in place. Um and so they are who manage the golf course operations there and that was where the number was provided us uh from twenty twenty-two. They've seen a a quite an uptick and an increase in golf since the pandemic, actually. And so it's it's really increased increased quite substantially since twenty twenty uh the use of that golf course.
The um second question, the thirty year deed restriction, that's just on the the use of the land per se, correct? But it doesn't require anybody to actually operate anything technically?
So it would be a deed restriction on the use of the land that they would need to keep it a golf course. So it could not be developable, like a housing development, or they couldn't bring in residential commercial. It would need to operate as a golf course. Um now, of course, with any private sector business, if they're not successful, um you know, they could sell or shut down. But the land itself has a restriction on it that they cannot then turn and sell to developer that would turn it into housing options. It would need to remain eighty-one acres as a a designated golf course in the community of Sartell.
Thanks.
And building on that, um it would not be allowed to be, you know, piecing part of it off for different use to then shut down a golf course later on. Um it needs to remain an eighty-one acre, eighty-one point three eight acre track, is that correct?
Correct. All it is currently all one parcel and would remain all one parcel.
One parcel.
Yeah.
As a golf course. And I think that's the that's the most impactful thing within our community. It is um it has become wildly successful. If you drive by there, the amount of cars, uh the amount of kids walking around there and playing golf, that I would not wanna see it become anything else.
You you had mentioned the lease um management group. So if someone wanted to come in and operate it themselves, what is the terms on that existing lease?
Yeah, good question. Um and we're happy to help provide lease information for anybody who would be interested. So my contact information is there on the proposal for anybody who wants to get into more details on that. But there would essentially be two options with that lease, um either a transfer of the exact lease, which is currently in our name and transmit it to a new owner to uh maintain the exact same terms of the lease. Um if that's agreeable upon the leasers, otherwise um the other option would be a buyout of that lease. And the current lease spells out the terms of that buyout. It's each year is a different amount um through twenty twenty-eight. So the lease itself has been extended a couple of times since initially established. And it technically still has ten years remaining through um twenty thirty-two. But the actual buyout of the lease um only goes through twenty twenty-eight. Um so there's a few options with that lease, uh whether you would want, whether it be a group that would want it to remain or could simply buy it out and operate, own and operate on their own. Or we could buy it out.
Follow up to that is then as a city, we're operating um profit on that current golf course and that funding, that's funding um some local resources. How are we gonna uh maintain that funding source with, you know, if it's the arena or the baseball association, whatever? How are we gonna maintain that potential?
Yeah, so the intent, um currently, the golf course lease payments that are paid to us uh come in and then are directly applied to Shields Athletic Complex for the Sartell Youth Rec Board. Um for the creation of that facility, which has been a a huge economic driver in our community. And so that amount, we would still be obligated to pay and would continue to fulfill that obligation. Um and so as of right now, the agreement with the rec board is that we pay that annually per the lease payments from the golf course lease. Uh so we would take sale proceeds to either continue paying that annually or uh work out an arrangement with them where we can make a lump sum payment as well. But it would still be a requirement for us to fulfill those lease payments to Shields Athletic Complex and Sartell Youth Rec Board.
And those lease payments go th- through when the uh committed ones to Shields?
Twenty thirty-two, along with the lease.
Twenty thirty-two.
With the golf course.
Yep. Okay. Council, a couple of things that I um I struggled with a little bit is the is the timing on this. Um not getting it out now, I think it's a great time to do so. Um but just on the deadline and um council member Smith and I had had some conversations on this at a committee level. I I I look at, we have December tenth on here right now, I look at that and say, hey, um when WJON or Saint Cloud Times or KNSI pick this up tonight or tomorrow, um if we move forward with it, there's people in the community that are gonna have sixty days to develop business plan, develop uh probably some engineer drawings, develop a funding source um for an opportunity they're just learning about. And and that would be if they learn about it tomorrow on day one. So I struggle a little bit with the constrained timeline of the deadline. Um knowing that we probably limit some respondents. And I'm wondering if we maybe take a different approach um which would have a deadline for, I guess, someone to recognize they will respond. Um which could be a shorter deadline. Um I think the pro of that or some of the the positives of that is I think the pro of that or some of the, the positives of that is that in short order, it gives us a recognition of who's working on a proposal and then be able to, based off that, be able to set a deadline for when those proposals would be due. I don't know, just a, a different creative way of, of, of making sure that we do get it out to the private sector, um, to get the most opportunity out of this. I think it's, it's a hell of an opportunity for those that are in the golf game, um, or wanna get into the golf game. And I wouldn't want a, kind of a subjective sixty-day timeframe to infringe upon that. The alternative would be to kind of just bump that December tenth out, a more reasonable time in my opinion. But I, I think if we could know early on in, in thirty days, who's working on, who's actually thinking of proposing? That's one. That's probably different. If that's ten people, then, um, I don't know if there's a way to work with the ten to say, hey, here's now the deadline, but thoughts on that?
I, I, I would agree. It is, it's tough to put a business plan together like that, but, um, I think if we, uh, if we get more than one person in, interested in it, maybe we could, um, you know, look at, do they have the credit capacity? Um, or is it just somebody with a good idea? Um, or, you know, what timeline would they need to finish a, a, a formal proposal? Um, I, I agree. It's, you know, December tenth is coming up pretty quick, so, uh, end of the year. I, I don't know.
You know, building off your concept, Ryan, I'm just thinking, maybe it's like an LOI. You know, like we, we do like a thirty-day letter of interest, LOI with kind of some blush information, see what we get. And then, you know, if it's one or two people, we can field out from them how much more time they might need for that due diligence period to actually turn in a full proposal. Um, and, and/or if it's ten, you know, we can kind of field through those initial blush ones and say, okay, these five, we wanna move forward with a due diligence, or we want all ten and we know it needs to go until later in January. But I'm just thinking of, you know, the private sector process of what we've walked through on the development side is typically an LOI of some sort.
Yeah, that's probably more structured or appropriately structured. Uh, I, I think of, you know, again, I wanna somewhat be able to level the playing field. Um, I, I think about the current operators or, or someone who may be engaged into the, um, this entity already. They've got a ton of background on it and wanna make sure that it, uh, others can do due diligence that haven't been part of this facility at all.
Um, when we discussed, I think I had a couple of concerns with extending the timeline. One was, you know, this council's brought this project to this point. So I felt like it was fair that this council be the group that makes the decision. Um, if we go into January, you know, we'll have a different council. So that was, that was part of it. Uh, my second thought was there's a strong likelihood whoever's awarded this project is wanna, going to wanna do some sort of development on the site prior to prime golf season. And I think as you get into January, February, you're really limiting your ability to lock in construction or general contractors and things of that nature, so.
I think in the development world, the Super Bowl weekend kind of in January is typically where we see uptick in RFPs and, and requests for getting spring start on stuff. So I, I, if you do push it, you can push it to mid-January, and I think you would have a appropriate amount of time. I, I, I do, uh, agree with your concern about the council, but beyond that, um, I think we can, pushing it out can only get a more qualified and, and thorough response to our proposal, um, hopefully, yeah. Open it up, so.
Yeah, I would agree with pushing it out as well. Um, I guess in the grand scheme of things, um, it'd be great to have the same council make that final decision. Um, but, um, for, um, development purposes and, um, getting all those that desire, I, I think adjustment would be, um, beneficial.
Um, is there an appetite for, rather than just putting, pushing out the date? Is there, um, an appetite, I guess broadly, that we do an ROI? Which maybe that allows us to pull the date back in versus just arbitrarily pushing it out?
Can we do a ROI for the same date and then go from there? So he was interested and then work with him?
Yeah, I almost think we, I almost think we do the letter of interest for like thirty day, like I don't, you know, you're not gonna get a ton of information on that, and then at that point, based on what those letters of interest are, you decide a longer term timeline from then. Is that, so you're not gonna require a ton of information with that letter of interest. It's just more of a...
And it's not binding, right?
It's not binding at all.
Hey, I'm interested.
I'm interested.
Likely to make an offer.
Yep. And then we get a gauge of how many people are we dealing with? If it's one or ten, and then from there, I think you guys can make a better decision on timing.
And as part of that, as part of that inquiry, we could, because if I understood right, there's this and then maybe a packet
Yep.
of information that would go along with it, right?
Yep.
So we could ask them. They need to respond back to us of when they would be able to have a RFP.
Exactly. And I think they could provide a little bit of a, um, almost like a professional resume of, you know, some of the services that they've done. So we can, to your point, Jeff, we can ensure that it's a, a legit letter of interest that has some stability behind it, and it's not just somebody throwing in, uh, you know, random proposals. So we actually have something to look at. And then I think, give them, give thirty days for that initial interest, and then from there, you guys can gauge how, you know, the, the number of and the seriousness of and the scale and scope of some of those to determine what that next step is.
Yeah, RFQ of, of sense.
Yeah, kinda, yeah.
You're gonna see the qualifications from the, in their intent.
Yeah, but not nearly as much depth as a full proposal.
And that probably then keeps us on track for Tim's timeline of making sure before, you know, Super Bowl first weekend in February that we have, we have proposals in and we'd be able to make a decision by that point.
I'll just keep in mind that, you know, to close on it then is gonna be thirty to sixty days from that point. So you're really talking March or April.
Yeah, that's a good point. So if I'm hearing you right, adjust this as more of a letter, you know, that they would submit a letter of interest with, uh, preliminary thoughts and concepts and a professional resume within thirty days, and then from there, we'll make a decision on broader scope?
With a RFQ?
This as an RFQ?
With an RF, with an RFP respondent deadline, right?
After that.
After that. So if we open it now for thirty days, um, what, I would just, you know, bump it up to our next council, right, or the council nearest that, and maybe by noon that day
Yep.
would be the due date, so we could review it. At council, staff would be able to say, hey, we've got five respondents.
What do you wanna do?
Based on engagement with those five respondents, we could, here's what we'd propose or recommend from a staff level of the RFP closure.
Yep. Yep, exactly.
Do we need to put any requ- like time parameters around that as far as, you know, if somebody comes back and says they need six months to put their plan together? Like, does that put us in a position?
Well, I think that's, that's, uh, I think the benef- that's the benefit of getting the, the upfront, hey, I'm interested. It's gonna take me this amount of time. Maybe to, to council member Cole's point, if thirty days from now it comes back and staff says, hey, we've got five respondents, maybe a little bit of the background of who the respondents are, if that's able to be shared, um, or some of their concept ideas. There might be in a concept that comes forward that says, hey, we'd like to do it. It's gonna take us five months to do it. At that point, council can say, we're super interested in hearing that one out. Let's wait five months. We may say, hey, let's do it in sixty days. Uh, I think it just gives us, it empowers us to make that decision thirty days from now.
Yeah, I think we're, excuse me, even for the long-term investment as the city, and I think the individual buying as well, so, um, as it'd be great to get in for next year, I think a lot of these people will be approaching it. Um, there won't be a lot of changes the first year, other than that, that strategic planning and those changes that they wanna see happen. But, um, if we can get it going faster, sooner, better, um, but, um, I'm not too worried about, um, next year at this point. So I, I, to translate, I'm, I'm open to kind of thirty-day get the interest. And if, yeah, like Ryan said, how we can engage, um, the timelines from there.
Any other, uh, discussion? Someone wanna attempt a motion at that?
I'll make a motion approved based on the information stated.
I got it.
Hold on. Information stated is, is different than what we, so.
You gotta summarize it.
Thirty-day.
Remember, he's lame.
LOI RFQ.
He doesn't have to deal with it since then.
He is not. It's your deal.
So what, what I heard council talk about was, um, thirty days or the next, um, soonest council meeting to that, we would have, um, a
LOI RFQ, yeah.
LOR or LOI, um, deadline
Yep.
of maybe noon that day.
Yep. Which actually ends up being, I just checked, works out great. It's November tenth, which is a Thursday, uh, prior to packets going out for the next meeting on November fourteenth. So that will work out really well. We'll do it as a part, you know, just roll it right in.
I'll amend my motion to include that.
As stated.
As stated.
Got it.
Okay, there's a motion. If there's any clarity on the motion needed, ask, otherwise I'd look for a second. The motion and a second. Uh, additional discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is department reports. PD?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Uh, one thing I do wanna add, it came out, I can't remember if April emailed, Thursday or Friday about some, uh, concerns of the construction managers at, uh, First Street and Riverside Avenue. Uh, people are continuing, trying to make their own shortcuts to get through, which is causing a delay in work down at that area. So we've also, besides trying to have people monitor the intersections over here, we're also trying to staff that area down there to deter people from driving through that area so construction can move more, in a more timely manner. So, uh, with that, I'll answer any questions you may have on the report.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Chief? Seeing none. Thank you. Fire?
Mr. Mayor, members, members of council, in front of you have our monthly report for fire. The one area we'd like to highlight is, um, obviously, we had our full-scale emergency management drill. Um, just had a ton of participation, not only from people within the city, but a lot of partners. We'd like to thank for helping us out on that. Um, a lot of great points. We're still, it's still being reviewed that, uh, um, from the value-better standpoint, so we'll have a lot of great training that we can work off of there. So any questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions for fire? Kudos to both of you on, uh, on that drill. It was, um, I won't say exciting, but it was impactful. Impactful to see and, uh, and know that there's a plan in place that, uh, should an event like that happen, so nice job. Public Works. Engineering.
Mayor, members of the council, you have a report. Uh, before we take any questions, just wanna highlight that the Sock River, Sock River Regional Park mountain bike trails are now open, um, and so encourage people to get out and use those. Other than that, I'd take any questions you might have.
Any questions for engineering? Or Public Works?
You have my report. Any questions?
Which I'll add is getting quite fancy.
Thank you. April?
Just, uh, walk through a couple of the hot topics of, uh, we'll start with the easy one, Nineteenth Avenue. Um, update there.
Paving today, finishing tomorrow, uh, cleanup over the next week, two weeks. Uh, we should open the week of the thirty-first, if not sooner.
So end of the month, Nineteenth Ave will be opened up, which will be awesome, uh, in Dale or and, uh, Scout?
Scout and Dale, they're wrapping up some items this week. Public Works will be out there to do striping on that roadway, and that should be open sometime next week.
Awesome. And then County Road One, um, anything to report there?
Making good progress. Um, lots of concrete got put down last week.
Okay.
Um, so contractors are still working diligently and doing what they can to get that open as soon as they can.
Awesome. And I know, I mentioned it earlier when the gentleman was, uh, speaking to us about the concerns. Literally Anna and I have a conversation, um, every day about, uh, about it. And there are small tweaks that, um, that staff continues to make that I do think is becoming very impactful of, uh, you know, lag times of how long Two and a Half Street will hold before Pinecone can go again. And, um, there's been some, there, I know there's been some challenges with, uh, lack of better term, I'll call it the motherboard of the lights here on Two and a Half, and it's probably something we need to look at budgeting for and updating at some point. But it, it definitely is getting better, um, though, uh, though not great. And, uh, Chief Hughes, I'd commend again your officers. I know it's not their primary role, um, not what they love to do, but especially on rain days. But, uh, I, I, it is showing our community that our staff is willing to help figure this out and, uh, and not hide behind it. So thank you for that, and thanks for staff that continue to fudge with the lights and make an impact. Uh, city commission updates.
Uh, one update tonight. We do have two openings coming in twenty twenty-three for the planning commission. Um, we will have, uh, two seats open, and we are actively recruiting applicants. Uh, applications are on our website, and we'll put out a social media post as well, and they are due November seventh at twelve noon, uh, to Scotts Air. Uh, and they'll begin processing those applications again for a three-year term starting on January first, twenty twenty-three.
Awesome. And again, that's a, uh, recommendation body to the council.
Correct, yep.
Does play a very critical role in flushing out development, future development, uh, future planning, so. Anyone looking to get involved, that's a great spot. Uh, city council committee updates and miscellaneous business.
Nothing.
Jill?
Nothing.
Jeff? Alex? Um, one thing I would, would add would be our, um, at the community center, um, the, from our last council, Carol Sartell came in and spoke to us about, uh, session they were doing for sixth graders at the community center. Had an opportunity, I know Anna did as well, to stop up there, and it was awesome to see the different stations that they put together on the history of Sartell, um, from videos to speakers, um, different artifacts. It was, it was, it was pretty phenomenal. Um, and to see the sixth graders that were engaged and talking to some of the seniors who are up there doing it, they were, uh, excited by how engaged the sixth graders were, right? They, sixth graders weren't looking at this as a field trip to go run around. Um, they were actively listening, asking great questions. So fun to see the history of Sartell be on display like that. Fun to see our, our youth, um, having an interest in it. So, um, that was awesome and, uh, something for sure worth noting. That's all I have for tonight. Would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.